I'd like to welcome everybody to the Robert G. McKinnon Council Chambers, Tuesday, June 12th, 2012, 7:00 PM. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Input. Is there any public members that would like to address the school committee?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to address the Southbridge School Committee. Over the past several weeks, I have sat by and heard members of this committee refer to my wife as an underground terrorist, a member of some negative political group, someone waging a venomous attack, and at the time, I found such things laughable. That was until the last meeting when laughable crossed the line to offensive and bordering on slanderous. Let me begin by telling you a bit about Erin Quinney. She is a dedicated wife and invested, involved, committed mother to our three children. She's a thoughtful, intelligent woman of great integrity and independence with a mind of her own, a strong sense of right and wrong, and what is just. She is not a part of any negative group. Her comments are on behalf of herself and no one else. Her only agenda was to do what was right. What motivated my wife to speak at the April 24th meeting was not anything political, as some of you have claimed. It was her personal integrity. She felt she could not sit by and allow such outrageous statements and behavior to take place before her and not speak out against it. She read the policy manual and found out how she needed to address her concerns and followed that policy exactly. She addressed the committee during public input, addressing her concerns to the chairman. She put her complaints in writing, addressing them to the appropriate person or group, stating in her complaint the action she would like taken, and she did so respectfully. At the following meeting, she asked when she could expect to hear a response to her complaints, and was told that the school committee doesn't have jurisdiction over enforcing its own policies, and that she should address her concerns with the voters. She did as she was instructed, and brought her concerns to the voters through a letter to the editor that was published in the Southbridge Evening News, which she read at the town council meeting, again respectfully, stating what was said by Mr. Lazzo and the corresponding violation she felt was committed. Not one of the facts or quotes has ever been disputed by Mr. Lazzo or anyone on the committee. Now that brings us to the last meeting, when you had the school committee lawyer come to address her complaints, and you would not let her answer and clarify anything for Ms. Rozak. While Ms. Rozak had the floor, you opened the floor to committee members to ask Ms. Rozak questions. That is where the line was crossed, when a member of this committee accused my wife of launching a character assassination against Mr. Lazzo. My wife never called into question his character or attempted to minimize his contributions to the community. She simply said what he did and said on April 10th was wrong, and he should be held accountable for it. The only character assassination attempt that has been waged is by members of this committee against my wife because she had the audacity and courage to stand up for what she felt was right. Now, Mr. Chairman, on the comments directed specifically to my wife and assertion that she does very little in this community, this could not be farther from the truth. First of all, she was on the reconfiguration committee and put in hours volunteering her time and doing research, then came and stood in front of this committee and offered positive and constructive information and feedback regarding the elementary school reconfiguration. Erin has been an active member of the Southbridge PTA since our son entered kindergarten last year, again volunteering many hours of her time. She is on the Eastford Road School Council, where yet again she volunteers her time and has offered almost, and has offered many solutions during the problem-solving process. She has sat in the audience at almost every school committee meeting this year so that she knows what is going on within the district. She works in this community, providing children, birth to three, with developmental delays, physical therapy and group services, and their families with service coordination. This winter, she led a music and movement group at the Jacob Edwards Library. She volunteers her time at Mass General, where she is the co-chair of the Family Advisory Committee, sits on the Bioethics Committee, trains residents in communication skills, and played an integral role on the committee that worked on getting a standalone pediatric endoscopy unit at the hospital. The respect my wife is due as a person, a parent, a citizen, and a voter greatly exceed any that this committee has shown her. For you to use your positions and your time in your capacity as school committee members to attack the character integrity of a parent in this district and assert misinformation as if it was truth is beyond disappointing, shameful, and offensive. It demonstrates an egregious misuse of power and a complete lack of integrity. If this is the behavior and level of discourse we can expect from members of our school committee, I think we are in a lot of trouble. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quinney. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the school committee? Is there anybody else from the public? If not, Agenda Item Number Three, Meeting Call to Water. Roll call, Secretary.
Mr. Degorio?
Present.
Dr. Dabico?
Excused.
Mr. Jogan?
Excused.
Mr. Lazzo?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Prinsipe?
Present.
Mrs. Woodrow?
Present.
Five present, two excused.
We have a quorum. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Consent Items. A warrant number 43 and the amount of $240,463.98. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Wiggins? Comment to this?
Agenda Item Number Five, you've already signed this one.
Okay. No comment from the business manager. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on, the approval of minutes, regular meeting, school committee meeting, May 22nd, 2012. Do I hear a motion?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes to that meeting? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, extension? Motion passes, minutes accepted. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Reports. Representative of the Student Advisory Committee. She has since graduated, and we will not have a representative till next year when they elect a representative to the school committee. Moving on to Presentations, Agenda Item Number Eight, A, Southbridge Curriculum Alignment Team for Mathematics.
I'd like to introduce our math team. And Mr. Zangy, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, I think is going to set the technology up. We have teachers here tonight in three areas, mathematics, English Language Arts, and Special Education. And we wanted to showcase what our staff is doing to align to the Common Core in math and ELA, but also in the new integrated service model for special education. And I really am very proud of all these teachers. I'm not going to announce each one of their names. They can introduce themselves as they come up. But the administrative team and the teachers have been working very, very hard, very closely together. But we wanted to showcase our teachers tonight because they're the ones that are doing the nuts and bolts, frontline work. So I'll introduce the math team, and they can introduce themselves as they come up. Safety and numbers.
My name is Pamma Bate, and I'm a teacher at Southbridge High School. I currently teach grade nine, and I'm on the Southbridge Curriculum Alignment Team. We have the nickname SCAT, and this is our math group. I'd like to introduce everybody that's with me tonight. This is Emily Mantino. Emily is from Charlton Street School. I also have behind her Shanna Hare from the high school, and Maria Murray. Maria Murray is from West Street. And I have Allison Rossi, I see, behind her from Charlton Street. I have Steve Busquet, who is from the middle school, and he's also the math department chair at the middle school, high school. And I have Dana Giusadis, hopefully I said her name right, from Eastford Road. And I have Margaret Sporty from Eastford Road with me tonight. So without further ado, I wanted to speak to you about our four goals that the SCAT team has. The first goal is to communicate with you. That is our goal as a team, is to share with the district what we're doing on the curriculum redesign. That's why we're here tonight, to tell you all the work we're doing to line up with the new Massachusetts standards. Our second goal is to work closely with the district administration and the teachers as we go through this process over the next multi-years that we're going to be transitioning. And it's our job, we're going to be educating the educators on the new curriculum. And now we get into the nuts and bolts. This is where we roll our sleeves up and we get to work. Our third goal is creating a living, breathing document that will serve as a resource. We refer to it as the Schedule of Assessed Standards, or SAS, and it will lay out all of the new Common Core. It will actually structure it throughout the year in four distinct groups, which I'll talk about more in a little bit. And then our fourth goal, the last bullet here, is we're going to create units of instruction. And this is something we've never done before. This is what I love about this, what we're working on, is that we're going to have, through Atlas Rubicon software, one place where each teacher will have access to complete resources and details of what they need to teach, approximations of when they need to teach it, and sharing, sharing across grade levels and across content in the district. So it's going to be a great resource. The more detailed, those were our four goals, so now I want to talk a little bit more about the Schedule of Assessed Standards. They will be aligned to the new curriculum. That's something we have to do, right? We have to all line up with the new standards. We also need to realize that there's going to be, not MCAS testing in the future, there's going to be new PARCC assessment, and that will be online, and that will be coming down the road for everybody, so we need to be on board with that. Continuing what the SAS will do for us, it's going to be a roadmap for instruction. So remember I mentioned a few minutes ago about the four cycles? We'll have specific dates. Each teacher will be told, on October 11th, you will be testing the PARCC standards on these five standards. So each teacher will know that for those 26 days in the first period of the year, they need to teach to those specific standards, and they'll have a guideline on how to do that. It's very clearly articulated. It sets a high level of rigor. I like how it's really raising the bar for what we need to teach our students, and it's just very clear what we need to do, and what we need to do at each grade level. So I think this is going to be a great tool for our district to really, you know, move forward into the future. And now, Emily will continue the presentation.
One of the things that this standard of the SAS will do is it's going to tell us the standards, all the teachers, what standards need to be taught in a given cycle, and it's also going to provide them with a list of resources, but it's not going to set the pacing guide, so it's not going to tell them on a day-to-day when you have to teach everything. It's going to tell you, in a given amount of time, when to teach. And it's not going to tell you how to teach. It's going to provide you with a list, extensive list, of activities and resources that every teacher can use so that they can individualize their instruction. They're going to be using Atlas Rubicon to create the units, and the first thing they do is they set up the timeframe and the units that they will be teaching, what standards they will be addressing. And as they create them, they're going to be including essential questions, the standards, activities, the resources that they can use, the assessments that they can use, technology, links, documents that they can access, so all teachers can, there'll be a wealth of information that can be accessed. And we've already had one training to accomplish learning how to use the Rubicon, and we have another full day, the day after, school gets out on the 20th. And then we'll be using summer to create more. And Maria Murray will continue.
All right, so we have a process that we've been following, and we started with setting up that Schedule of Assessed Standards, and now we are now working on aligning our current math textbook to the Common Core standards. As we were doing that work, we found that there were a lot of gaps in the math program that we are currently using, so we are filling in as many of those as we can onto the schedule, and then we're examining new support material, asking the teachers what we can use to fill in all of those gaps, and that work has already started. We are continuing creating the schedule. It's in a draft form now at this time, and it should be finished pretty soon. We're working on units on the Atlas Rubicon. Some teachers are ahead of other teachers as far as starting because we haven't had our training yet, but there are some teachers that have already jumped in, and there are units available for people to look at on the Atlas. So the team has already started creating them. We are also working on designing some formative assessments that will be used to decide, using the formative assessments to help us with our RTI, our Response to Intervention. So as you're teaching, you're assessing right along the way, right at the moment that you're teaching, you're assessing the kids and deciding which kids need to go back and do this again, which kids can move forward. The interim assessments are being used as benchmarks, so we'll know at that point in time, on October 11th, which kids got it, which kids need to go back in and do it again. So we have two different kinds of assessment going on. This coming year, the team is planning on continuing the process of designing our units and sharing those with all the teachers across all the grade levels and across the content areas, and also communicating with our district leaders on any opportunities that come up to improve and any successes that are ongoing. So we'll be modifying that Schedule of Assessed Standards as we go along and taking a look at it and continually modifying it. Any questions for our team?
Any questions?
Yeah, let me just follow up with what they said for a second. First of all, this is really difficult work. I think the team here has put in a framework that admirably makes it easy to understand, but I don't think, I think it's important to understand how hard this team is working. This is not like copying it out of the book. This is where you really have to match standards that are written in a not-so-easy-to-read form to what we're actually, what we have and what we don't have, and then find things to fill the gaps. So the work that these folks are doing is admirable. It will have an impact on teaching and learning for kids, and I think, I tell you, I appreciate the work that you're doing, and I know the other teachers will appreciate the work that you're doing when we roll this out to the rest of the staff. And I know that it's not easy, but we are very thankful to have a quality staff to work on this. So I'll turn it over to the school committee.
Any questions at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to Schedule of Assessed Standards, and you speak about PARCC, Assessment Online, and I believe this is the first time I'm hearing about this, and it replaces the existing MCAS. Could you expound on that?
The 46 states that join together that are using the Common Core standards, they are also designing new assessments to go with those new standards, and PARCC is one of those assessments.
Yeah, and I think it's important to point out, and this team may not know it, they may, the original design for the PARCC rollout assessment was 2014, and quite frankly, that process is substantially behind. So we don't anticipate this new assessment replacing the MCAS in 2014. However, the MCAS is changing to kind of accommodate some of that lag time, so it's important that we match these standards up because they will be tested using MCAS initially and then roll over to the PARCC assessment. And I see on your notes there that you asked what PRCC stands for, and I should know that, but I don't memorize all the acronyms we use, and I see math people go like this. Some of us don't know what that means.
Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers.
That's the partnership that the federal government forced us to do if we took Race to the Top money and accepted the Common Core standards.
And I do see that it replaces it at the end of the, you know, the multi-year transition. Thanks.
Any other questions? Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Lazzo, and I appreciate all the time and hard work, and thank you, Eric, for pointing out the difficulty of getting to where we all have to get in this I know the math team at the top of the high school, at the top end this year, did a really wonderful job representing the district, and that's kudos to them all the way up and the teachers that helped them. I want to make sure that as we go from MCAS, which was the cats meow, or the big deal some years ago, and now, well, it wasn't really quite the big deal, and now we're going on to something else, and I guess that's the way things evolve, which we should all embrace, I suppose. However, it seems easy, what I notice is it seems easy to get lost for all of us, to get lost in the transition from the last best thing to the next best thing. I have to say that I am hopeful that this works admirably because we need it. I guess I hearken back, my concern is that I hearken back to a time not so long ago when although you'd have kids doing really well at one level in the district, by the time they got to another level in the district, there was difficulty, there were deficits, there was kids, there was a fallback, if you will, of progress, and it appeared to me that you'd have to sort of make up some time as you went from one school to another, if you will, and I really want to make sure, guys, that we do not get lost in the grand scheme of MCAS and PARCC, and whatever the next thing is going to be, we need to make sure that we are cohesive and efficient and effective, and all the way up, right, from each of the elementary schools right up to the middle school, progressing through the middle school without any bumps in the road, onto the excellence that many of our students, for instance, the math team, has shown this last year. So please, I implore you all to keep that in mind as we don't get lost in the popularity of the next best thing. Please make sure we're sticking to what our kids need and that straightforward line. That's what they need to excel, and I hope we can make sure that's in part of this whole structure.
I think that's the strength of this team. I think the fact that you have here elementary teachers who teach down into the second and third grade, all the way up through high school teachers, and one of the team members who's not here tonight teaches calculus at the high school. I know that Pam teaches at the high school, so we have a very broad range of teachers working on this, just so we have teachers who know at all different levels that there is a flow. I think that's really important.
That transition is, I find it's really important between when you're coming from elementary to middle and onto high school, so I appreciate you paying attention to it, guys, and look forward to all the success. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Degorio?
How long, is this on now? How long have you guys been looking this entire program and the whole process? How long have you been involved in this, would you say? You guys looking at each other like, huh, huh, huh? How long? Quite a while, I would imagine, right?
Well, it came in some different phases. I was brought into it several months ago, as I think some people were, and then as the team developed, it kind of gelled. So I think hard work, I've been working a couple months, I would say, on this, like hard, like meeting several times and really pushing our sleeves up and digging into it. But it kind of developed throughout the year.
You guys all look kind of, well, you look younger than me, but that's not going much. But you all look like you're pretty experienced as educators. Is that a fair assessment? So if you take all your experience and combine it, we're looking at a lot of years. And you guys feel this is the way to go, and that this is going to be successful. Recognizing the fluidity of education, we have to understand that not everything is successful. You can try it, and if it doesn't work, you try something else, and that's what you guys are doing. You have my complete admiration, you have 100% of my support. I think that you guys have put together a fantastic plan. You look like you guys are ready to move on it, and it looks like it has a cohesiveness to it. So I say, have at it, and let's go get them. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you very much to all of you for putting in all the extra time and the work for all our children that deserves all this, and they'll raise to the top, so to speak, as the program that is, and I just want to give you guys a big kudos.
And I just want to recognize Tammy Perrott, who is our Director of Mathematics, who's kind of working with this team. I know she doesn't, she's not speaking tonight because really the forefront of this is our teachers, but it takes good leaders to work with teachers and pull the right people together and get them, and give them the resources they need to be successful. So Tammy, thank you very much, and Jeff, thank you very much, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Any other questions? If not, just a quick comment from the chair. I think the discussion over the evolution of curriculum in Southbridge is heading in the right direction. I think we've got the brightest minds in the think tank that our math team is a team under the leadership of Ms. Perrott. We can coordinate, communicate. I think being in front of us tonight, letting us know where we're headed, and I think presenting it to the public on where we're going, we will be waiting on different intervals of this road to support, whether it be text, technology. I know you're all excited about a lot of things going on in our school system, and I really pay tribute to each and every teacher that has to teach in Massachusetts, that we've evolved so quickly, no sooner than you got something down pat, they changed it again on us. So I think you've done an admirable job, but I think there's a big job ahead, and I think Mr. O'Leary touched on it, but I have the confidence that we have the excellence and the brightest minds working on it. So I'd like to thank the superintendent also for bringing this presentation forward, and the curriculum coordinator. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our English Language Arts team. Some of those representatives are here this evening to talk to you about where we are in the same process with the English Language Arts. Karen Ryan is our Director of Literacy, is teaching tonight, so unable to be here at the college level, but I know the team members are here and have a presentation similar to the one you just saw, but it's a little different because ELA's in a different place than math is right now. And I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, good evening. We do have a different presentation and a different color. I am Kathleen Catterett, here to represent Charlton Street School, and with me this evening, I have just a few members from the ELA team. We are a much larger group, but this evening with me, I have Violet Quinn, representing Eastford Road School, Miriam Krantz from Wells Middle School, and Courtney Curry, the sixth through 12 department chair. I just want to clarify, piggybacking off of a few statements made by the members on the committee, that we as teachers, it's our, we are expected to teach the standards, and there's a difference between curriculum and program. So we're talking tonight about the standards that are set forth by the state, and what is our responsibility to teach to the students. So in discussing our goals, that is what our focus is, and what we're keeping in mind is that we're trying to align ourselves with what is mandated to be taught to our students with our focus being on the standards. So our goals, of course, are to best implement the Common Core, and I'm a hands-on type of person, so I brought with me my grade-two curriculum, and that is one of our jobs as a team, is to take all of this information, unpack it, unroll it, and put it into a format which is digestible for our classroom teachers, so that they can best put their efforts into planning lessons and units for our students. So we are trying to create a unified list of resources to help us to teach those standards, and as the other team already talked about, we are using the ANET Achievement Network, interim assessments, to help guide us in our instruction. What we are also doing as a team is trying to create that same What we are also doing as a team is trying to create that same scope and sequence of standards that support the Common Core and the shifts that the Common Core introduced to us. We're all familiar with what we know as the state frameworks, and it's sort of the same thing. The Common Core just has a few changes, and that's what they call shifts. And those changes are basically asking students and teachers to use more rigor with our students, to use higher-order thinking skills, and have our children become masters at closed reading of texts, to find evidence in text and report back. And to... Our goal is to help our teachers to learn the best ways. My slide here says "new ways," but I feel like it's not new, it's the best practices that have been used in the past and we need to be using in the future. New types of readings and ways to think about literacy. Again, the Common Core talks about shifts, which are really just kind of changes in focus. The old standards were much broader, much more detailed, and these are broader statements. For example, an ELA shift would be knowing based upon research that by fourth grade, most people, most... 50% of what people read as adults, over 40% by fourth grade should be informational. So we need to continue to enhance the literary and the fiction that our young students are always exposed to, but know that by the time they're in eighth grade, we're reading for meaning, we're reading for information, and that's just life. So what the shifts will look like in the classroom are that our texts are helping to push for that independent level of reading, that our students are reading more complex texts at their level, and that the teachers are scaffolding instruction to best meet the needs of our students. That includes writing under valid textual evidence to support the students' learning from the text. So everything is connected.
Courtney's going to take over. So what the team is doing as a group, there are some things that we are doing and some things that we aren't. What we are doing is we're giving people the standards that need to be taught in a six-to-eight week cycle, but we're not telling people what day they have to teach what standard or what week they have to be doing this. So there's some flexibility and there's some opportunities for differentiation in the classroom. And then we're also giving people a list of resources to use for each cycle and to address each standard, but we're not telling everybody how to approach teaching of standards so that creativity can stay within the classroom based on a teacher's preferences or student needs. And in order to make this happen, we're creating a scope and sequence. And we are also using, similar to the math, the same SAS cycle for assessments between six to eight weeks. And like Kathleen said, we're really pushing more inclusion of nonfictional and informational text in our instruction. We're also going to be using data to drive our instruction, so we'll be looking at the assessments and the results and seeing where our students have weaknesses and readdressing and reteaching those weaknesses so that we make sure that they reach proficiency in those areas. And then finally, our big goal is to increase rigor. And that includes increasing text complexity, requiring students to think on higher levels of critical thinking, and just really pushing our students towards that level of excellence and proficiency that we know that they can reach. Any questions?
Any questions by school committee?
I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you very much, Courtney, everybody here, Kathleen. It's extremely... This is not easy work, as I said. It's just as not easy for ELA as it is... Is that a good word? Is that good language? As it is for math. It's very difficult to do what we're trying to get our teachers to do, and they're admirably doing a great job of doing it. It goes back to something that's in our strategic plan, is something that I talked to you about over a year ago, which is that we need to teach our kids up here. We need to stop with the idea that Southbridge kids can't meet the standards that are set by the national norms around the country for what every fourth grader can learn or fifth grader can learn. We need to teach our kids where we expect them to be. And when we talk about scaffolding up, we talk about what that means is it means providing the support the kids need to get there. That's what we have to do, and that's what the new Common Core standards and what the work these folks are doing will allow us to do that and increase the rigor and thereby increase the achievement level of our students. And that's why we exist as a school system. So ladies, thank you very much.
Just a quick comment. I'd just like to comment. One of the words that you came out with on this team was identifying the weakness. When you're teaching and kids are learning, everybody learns at a different pace. I was impressed with the comment of it's kind of a tracking thing, locating where we're weak, identifying it, and solving the problem. That seems to be one of the things from the past that haunted us. We did well in certain areas, then we didn't do well in other areas. And I think that... Very optimistic under the comments here that we're going to be identifying, tracking, and conquering the problem. At least they're identifying it before they attack it. I think that's very good. Thank you very much again.
Eric? Thank you.
Mr. Zangy?
I think he's just the technology guru tonight. I'm actually going to turn this over to, I think, Mr. Meyer and his team for a presentation, an update on where we are with special education and the integrated service model. He'll introduce his team now.
I'm going to be doing a brief update of the special education in the district. Part of my presentation is about the integrated service delivery model, and we've brought a couple of people here to speak about that from... Who's going first? Okay. From Charlton Street School, Karen Bosco and Sarah Sturgis.
I teach second grade at Charlton Street School. I'm a regular education classroom teacher.
And I'm Sarah Sturgis. I'm the inclusion teacher in the classroom.
So what we're here tonight, just to share the positive experiences that we've had this year as a full inclusion model and what we have learned implementing this model. That's what we're going to share with you. Our room is made up of 19 students. There's a regular education teacher, a special education teacher, and a full-time paraprofessional in our room at all times. And we also have support staff that works within our classroom. And I'll get a little bit further into that in just a minute.
All right. And to start off, we're going to talk about our classroom setup. Our classroom is center-based. It's not set up like a traditional classroom with desks lined up in a row. We have centers set up around the room. And each center is student-focused. We also have no teacher desks within the room. We know that's a little bit different. We started off the year like that. Originally, we did that because we wanted it to be more student-oriented, kid-friendly. We didn't want too much teacher material in the room. But we found, as the year went on, we actually were more productive as teachers. We were more engaged with the students, and we were better able to monitor them within the room.
It's hard to determine who the classroom teacher is also. As mentioned before, with support staff, the support staff that we do receive in the room, they do not pull the students out. They service their students who need those services within the classroom. It's important for us to sit down on a weekly basis, or even more often, for our common planning time with those teachers, just to get together so that we are all teaching efficiently, we're teaching with the same objectives, and overall the same goals to be covered. And with proper planning, it's just another easy way to keep it full inclusion. Students are hard to distinguish front of the room because we work in small groups on a very, very regular basis. And we're in centers. Our room is, like I said, in centers so often. We don't really have a front and central part of the room. We use it as a whole group time for about 10 minutes for initial instruction when we're covering something for the first time. And then we break into those small groups to further explicitly teach what we're to be covering from the standards.
And this is just a picture of our room, just to give you a visual. As you can see, we have no teacher desk, no front of the room, and we're broken up into small groups. All right. And to talk about our center-based instruction, when we do our centers, we have four different leveled groups. And these groups are based on needs. They're flexible and interchangeable. So we base our centers on assessments, whether it's pre-assessment or observation or any other kind of informal assessment. And then during our centers, we have three groups working in intense small group setting. While one group is working independently, they're doing either something on the computer or they're working on Versatiles, or we have a great tech program called Leapfrog. So that's another independent activity that they do.
Each center has its own objectives. However, each center focuses on the same skill throughout the classroom. It's important for us to post the objectives every time we teach a lesson, just so that the students know what's expected of them and also so they know we have a purpose up there and we, you know, our expectations of them need to be met. So like I said, our objectives are very important in our classroom in each group. Also, group rotation chart. Do you want to get to that? It's a... We have a sample of one up here with the coins. It's a color-coordinated, very easy visual for our second graders, just because we have the flexible... Flexibility of moving students from one group to another, depending on their ability at that time with what we're covering. We want to make it clear and easy for them. At the beginning of the... This was, you know, the first year we're doing this. Beginning of the year, we did have a couple of hiccups here and there with rotation and even a little bit in the middle of the year. So we found the best way to do so was with such a clear visual. We have coins up here just because we were covering money at last everyday math unit. And so we had penny centers and dime centers, and they would rotate accordingly. So the dimes would come to me, pennies to Ms. Sturgis, and so on. Just kind of a cute way to keep them entertained, too. Groupings, or excuse me, color-coordinated bins provided for each student also, which is that other picture you're looking at there, just for independent work. If a student doesn't have time to finish or whatnot, they go into those bins and they know what's expected of them. When they... When and if they do have free time, there's always work for them to be completing and continuing on with.
All right. And this is just an example of a math block. We start off with a five-to-seven-minute introduction of the skill. That's when we talk about the objective. And we introduce to the students what we're going to do within each center. Then we break up into our centers, and then we do a three-to-five-minute wrap-up on the rug. And we just review the objectives and we talk about what they learned within their centers.
So here, we have some photos of our centers. Take the focus off of us. So we have explicit instruction going on here. And also, the bottom right picture is students who are independently working. I think that's with Versatiles at that time. So they, you know, they understand what to do, what's expected of them, and we try to set the highest expectations possible, even when they're working by themselves.
And this is just a picture of how we integrate technology within our classroom. We have an ENA board. We're lucky enough to have one of those, and we utilize it quite a bit. We use it on a daily basis. And we also use the computers in the room quite a bit. And this is a picture of our data wall. Our classroom's extremely data-driven. That's what we base all of our centers off of, so we just wanted to kind of show off our data wall. We put a lot of hard work into that.
Just a wrap-up. The important attributes that we feel are key to our successful full inclusion classroom this year in second grade was flexibility. And that's flexibility among, you know, students coming in and out as needed into our groups, and also flexibility among all of us as teachers, the teachers who come in, service, and leave. We all need to be able to change as needed and shift and so on. High expectations for all students, obviously. Positive reinforcement, you know, catch them being good, praise them, so that classroom behavior isn't a part of, you know, any kind of negative situation. We keep it positive in our room, and we have ways of doing that. Sharing tools, and that means obviously materials, ideas, constructive criticism, and the responsibility of the outcomes of the assessments. And, you know, not one teacher's doing it above another teacher, or one teacher, you know, isn't doing it as well. We... Our common planning time is the most important time where we can converse and figure out what worked, what didn't, and what we can do to better that. And of course, like I just said, preparation time and planning time is also key. Is that it? That's it? I believe so. Yep, questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, ladies, for coming and sharing that information. I do have a couple of questions because when this program was brought to us way at the beginning of the year, it was described to us of having four different levels of classroom teaching for the needs of the students. So I was wondering exactly what level of classroom teaching, A, B, C, or D, that your students are in, and also that this is just one classroom out of many, and not every classroom, I don't believe, is set up the way you are. So I just, you know, I want to... For the parents that are seeing this on TV, you know, they're going to maybe have a student that's in a classroom, they're like, "Oh, ours doesn't run that way." So just if you could explain a little bit more about what level you're at for teaching and some of the other differences, perhaps, if you could.
Before you answer that question, let me try to explain a little bit more about the A, B, C, D. When we decided to do the inclusion, the full inclusion, the integrated service model, we knew that our resources were limited. So we decided to concentrate students who had similar disabilities in classrooms where the services could be provided in one classroom versus spread out amongst several classrooms. So in doing that, that means the kids who have the highest need have more staff members because that's where the services need to be. So in this classroom, there are three, so I'm guessing you're probably a B classroom?
We're an A.
You're an A? Okay, so you're the top level.
We're actually the bottom level.
The lowest level?
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead, talk about that, how that functions in your classroom. Because I've been in this classroom, just so you know, a couple of times, and it's... I would say it's a model classroom for what we want this to go to. And these ladies are... It's a testament to their work together that they're able to... When I walk in there, I don't know what student is special ed, what student is ELL, what student... I don't know which teacher is the regular teacher versus the specialist. I don't know the answer to that, and that's the way it should be. Because that means they all are responsible for every child in that classroom. So I know I keep talking, but you guys go ahead.
You're clarifying everything for us. Thank you. We're done. No.
I admire what you do.
As you were just saying, we are the gritty classroom, and we do have help in our classroom quite a bit, which is tremendous with the diversity that we do have in our classroom. So we do, like I said on the slide, there are three of us full-time, which is fantastic. And we are able to create these centers and these groupings so that we are trying to get these students at their, you know, their zones of proximal development there, you know, so that they need that push to get to the next level. And we have to, and we base that, I'm going to take one, I'll base that according to what teacher's teaching what at what time. We do rotate the centers, too. So it's not one group of students receiving services from Mrs. Sturgis alone. They'll come to me after and so on and so forth.
Right. That was definitely a challenge for us in the beginning of the year, integrating all the kids together at once because they are very diverse within that classroom. But it took us a while, but throughout the year, these centers really made it work. And it's great because within our centers, we don't just have my students and then her students in the center. We actually have them integrated amongst each other, so we have great models. And my students do start picking up on what her students do, and it really... It does work. We saw it at the end of the year, and it's great.
You just busted us. My students just did.
What? Oh, sorry.
And another positive, I'd just like to add one thing, is it's wonderful seeing the cooperation, the collaboration among the second graders in that classroom. At the beginning of the year, maybe they weren't helping each other out as much, but there are clear leadership skills being built and wonderful role models being displayed by the end of the year. It's tremendous.
It's fascinating to watch. It really is.
We're very proud of our students for that matter.
Yes, I just, you know, I want to say thank you. I thought the presentation was wonderful. And the reason why I asked that question is because when it's brought to us in a meeting and they say A, B, C, D, and a lot of us don't know. Some of us do know. I know I volunteer every Tuesday at Charlton Street School, so I see a lot of the work in different classrooms. I haven't ventured down to see your room, but I mean, it's wonderful that you're working that way. And I kind of like the idea with milk teacher desks, you know, so the students, you know, gives you more room in your classroom. But I just want to say that, you know, it's great to see the progress that's been made and to know, for the people to know that there's, you know, the different levels and that you're doing a great job and the kids are working together. And that's why I asked the question, because it's hard for us to visualize it.
Any other questions by school committee? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Next, I'd like to introduce Jan Weinberg and Melissa Zapula from Wells Middle School.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Weinberg. We teach sixth-grade social studies at the Mary U. Wells.
And I'm Melissa Zapula. I teach sixth-grade special education at Mary U. Wells.
Well, they're working on their, getting their PowerPoint up. Let me tell, I've been in this classroom as well a couple of times, and I know there's a teacher who works in that classroom, ELL teacher, who isn't here this evening. When I walked into this classroom, having been a secondary principal for so long, I was amazed at the level of integration in this classroom. It's a testament to how three teachers coming together, who are all good teachers, can create an environment that's good for all kids at a very, very high level. It's a testament to the work you're doing, because it's a little different in a middle school or high school classroom than it is to, for an elementary classroom. But you guys go ahead and give your presentation, and I just wanted to say that I really admire what you're doing.
Thank you.
Our guideline, at the beginning of the year, we were given some work that, to help us sort of guide how we were to do the co-teaching model.
Put the microphone on.
And the guideline said that all the educators, the three of us in the room, would be co-teaching, that we are all responsible for differentiating the instructional plan and the delivery, the assessment of the student achievement, as well as classroom management.
Our classroom in particular has three different teachers, like Mr. Ely said. We have the content teacher, Mr. Weinberg, myself as a special education teacher, and we have, also have the English language learner teacher as well, who we all share in the planning and the delivering of each and every lesson, planning the objectives, and the, and delivering each piece of the lesson to each other, or to our students.
As far as the approaches that were used throughout the year, again, we tried to take different approaches as we went through. One was supportive co-teaching, where one of us would take the lead role, and the other members would rotate amongst the student population to provide support, to talk about what's going on throughout the lesson.
Examples of this have included, before, each of us planning a different PowerPoint while the other teachers move through the classroom, making sure students are following along, making sure they're understanding, as well as clarifying points. One thing that I feel that Mr. Weinberg and I do very well is that if we supplement each other in terms of teaching, and so if there's something that I may have missed, or he may have missed, we make sure that we touch upon it. So we very well complement each other in making sure that we're getting the objectives across, while keeping the rigor.
And our example isn't our classroom, but it was a classroom that we located that they were doing some of the approaches that we were using in our room. Another approach that we used was parallel co-teaching, where members of the team instruct different heterogeneous groups of students simultaneously. This can be done within the classroom, where we break off into separate groups. This can be done if we need to, to break them off into different rooms, and then bring them back together, however is needed.
One example that we did of parallel co-teaching throughout the school year is that we had, since we have three certified teachers in our classroom, we were able to separate the students into heterogeneous groups based on whether or not they are an English language learner, or they were a student that requires specialized instruction. And we were able to break them apart into separate groups, and rotate them throughout the week. So one day, I would teach one topic, Mr. Weinberg was teaching another topic, and another, and the English language learner teacher was teaching another topic, and then we would rotate the groups per day. We've also done, the other type of parallel co-teaching that Mr. Ely had possibly seen was where we were in the same classroom. We split our kids up into different, into different heterogeneous groups. We worked on different topics, and then they presented it to each other. So they were getting that teaching, and they were able to explain to the other students what they learned.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that I saw, and I want to interject us a second. That classroom was extremely powerful, because students were teaching students. You couldn't tell what student had what disability or language barrier, and what I was really impressed with was the three teachers in the room, if I didn't know each one of them, I wouldn't know who was the social studies teacher, who was the ELL teacher, and who was the special education teacher. They played off of each other almost like Dean Martin and Jerry Lewis used to, you know? It's just, they, one would start a sentence, another would finish it. It was just, it was really amazing and powerful, I think, as a tool, and you should be committed for that.
And again, this quote, we've heard flexibility and fluidity, so, you know, we thought this quote would be, again, it's appropriate, that we have to be fluid as we, as we go through, and each day, see what's going to be brought upon us. And then another approach that we tried to use was the complementary co-teaching model, where a member of the co-teaching team does something to supplement or complement the instruction provided by other members of the team.
Examples that we have done of this are making sure that we have overhead projectors. Unfortunately, Mr. Weinberg's classroom isn't equipped with a smartboard, but we do make sure that we have visuals constantly available for our students, as we do have such a diverse need of the learners. Modeling the note-taking, we have very much, especially because Mr. Weinberg and our ELL teacher have been very involved in the Keys to Literacy training, very much modeling the note-taking, making sure that the students are following along, and, again, paraphrasing the statements, making it clear. Because then, again, we have such a diverse group of learners. One of our classrooms has, I believe, like sixteen students, and the other one has about twenty-five students. And so it becomes very challenging to make sure that all the students are understanding everything the first time it's given, and that, for me personally, as a special education teacher, repeat, repeat, repeat. So the more we can paraphrase it, and the fact that we have three different people to say it three different ways, as well as the twenty-five students to repeat it as well, we make sure that we get all the learning and the, all the information, and for each of those students.
And again, you know, the Keys to Literacy program, I think we did some summary writing, which I think is something that, and Cecilia, before you came in, you saw them do some summary writing, and then they were teaching out, and doing some group work like that. So, again, that's some of the approaches, and some of the ways that we've been trying to use the co-teaching model at Wells Middle School.
Are there any questions by school committee? If there are no questions, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question. We had the presentations, and I know that when we went into inclusion and various things with the curriculum, do we have a tracking mechanism that tracks the inclusion success or non-success?
Well, we have, all of our students are in inclusive settings, so we have, we have, we will have, obviously, MCAS data. We also have assessment data ongoing with all of our students, so we can compare anything, really. We compare previous, previous achievement versus new achievement. We can do all those things, and now we have, with our data manager, has a database of those, of that information. So we will be tracking that. That's one of the things our data teams do on a regular basis.
Good.
I think Mr. Meyer has the rest of his presentation.
And technologically disabled, impaired, I guess is the right word. Thank you very much for those presentations. That was some real good examples of some of the real positive things that are happening because of this model in the district. I want to touch on briefly five areas, and I'm going to just do another minute on the integrated service delivery model, but talk about some collaborative out-of-district placements, our current district programs, some new district programs, and some things that we're doing, some exciting things that we're doing for prevention and intervention. This integrated service delivery model, you know, it's based on a lot of research that kids that are included are doing better than kids that are substantially separate, as a rule, that we can do services, push in and pull aside, rather than removing them, so that they don't miss critical instruction that's happening for every student. This is part of the Massachusetts Tiered Support System, and this is something that the state is pushing, and I think we're way ahead of the curve in this. And everything, and you've heard this from the presenters, talk about differentiated instruction, that we want to present a concept to the whole class, and then bring it down to a level, and a skill level, and for instruction, where we can get kids from where they are to where we want them to be. So in cases, there'll be some kids that are pulled out, and sometimes those kids in this classroom, they are doing some independent and unrelated things, and that's okay. Sometimes, and most of the time at least, there's parallel instruction, where they're working on the same skills or same activities, and what you've really seen today is the model, that where really everything's meshing together, and the teachers are working as a team, and functioning really well. And that's the ideal goal for every student, but it does take a while to get there. But they're doing an outstanding job here, and in the other buildings in the district. This has been a collaborative effort with ELL, Title I, Special Education, General Education. It's not just special ed out there, or ELL, or, it's like a shared ownership of kids. And we meet all the time in our cabinet meetings, and our district meetings, and talking about instruction and curriculum, doing learning walks, and what works, what doesn't work. What you saw is a real good example of what we're really trying to press. Another area that, when I was hired four years ago, was that was talking about our out-of-district placements. The status right now, as of what I looked at today, is that we have currently five students in a residential placement. We have one student in a hospital placement. We have thirteen students in private day placements, and we have thirty-five students in our collaborative placements. In two thousand and eight-nine, we had sixty-eight students involved in these out-of-district programs. As of today, we have fifty-six. And we do provide a continuum of services, from the general education classroom to our district programs, collaborative programs, private, and everyone is more restricted to get the residential. Our goal is, we want to keep the kids here. And we want to build our capacity to provide these services and prevent these out-of-district services. We'd rather spend our money here on our kids, and we can do, and we can do a better job. Programs that we've, that we've established, we had one middle school, high school program when I took over, and four years ago, we've expanded that to two programs. We had two past programs for kids with autism, we've expanded that to three. We've also added a life skills program. This year, for next year, we're looking to do a work experience program, bringing students back from the collaborative. This is for our older kids, seventeen, eighteen years old through age twenty-one. Also, some younger students that are away and out of the district, because they've created a lot of excitement, and they are, they don't do well in a seven-period, they need more of a hands-on curriculum. So we want to, we want to create some excitement. Now that we have some space in the old high school, we think we can provide a good program for them there. Our capacity right now is that we have approximately fifteen students in our past classrooms. Twenty-four students were served this year in our shore programs, six in our life skills program, our work experience programs, we're looking at about ten kids, fifty-five kids. If these students were in our collaboratives, at thirty-five to forty-five to fifty thousand dollars apiece, it would cost us a lot of money. So we are saving, besides saving money, we're providing them with a better program. Some of the exciting things we're doing in special ed, and, you know, through Eric's leadership with our accelerated improvement plan, we are, I've been working, I was working with our ELL coordinator, and we have a high number of students that are both English language learners and special education. We're trying to reduce that number, looking at ways to do that. We're looking at expanding our response to intervention for next year. We've had some people do some training with us overall, and our special ed people are going to be involved with that, as well as other district staff, the school support teams, and the data collection. And I mention DIBELS here, because that's what I know, and it's something that all students are given benchmarks in grades K through five, so we can compare and see how our students with disabilities are comparing with general education students. And we're using it then for progress monitoring, just making sure that they're trying to close that gap. Another initiative that we're looking at for next year, and doing some training on starting this summer, is positive behavior supports.
Any questions by the school committee?
Just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you give us a little bit more information positively on the program that's going to be going into the high school? Is it going to be one program, two programs? How many students? You know, the ins and outs, because a lot of people are asking questions, and they're saying, oh, you know, older kids are going to be in our neighborhood, I don't know. You know, so if, you know, if it's going to start in September like everyone else, I think, you know, we should have, if we have information on that. If it's not going to start in September, maybe mid-year, whatever you can give us on that.
Yeah, these students that we're talking about, there's an older, an older group of students that are, right now, their ages eighteen through twenty-one. They are in a wonderful program that our collaborative is running, where they actually do some life skills instruction during, at their campus. And then they go out with the support into the community to either some volunteer work, just some community experiences, some group projects, even some paid, some paid work with job coaches. And we're trying to duplicate that program, so that, and we're releasing some vans for transportation to get them into the community, provide some support with them, to teach them how to do a job, work on their social skills, their coping skills, their life skills for, so that they can become as independent as possible when they turn twenty-two. As part of our transition planning, we want to teach them self-advocacy, which is really important, and one of the state mandates for kids that are age fourteen and older, actually. So this is going to be a, pretty much a community-based program. We'll spend some time on campus, and, you know, we'll have, you know, access to computers, and they'll be doing some life skills activities. Hopefully, we'll be doing some projects around the building, then also maybe get out and do some stuff in the hospital. Right now, the students we're bringing back are doing Wheels on Meals. We have somebody working at the McDonald's. We have people doing some recycling. So there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity in the community to get these kids involved, and get them to know the community.
Second program, Mike?
Second program is for younger kids. We're going to be spending time working on their MCAS skills that they're going to need for ELA, math, and science, but then more of a hands-on curriculum from pre-vocational things to get them ready, so we can get them also out into the world of work when they get done with the MCAS.
And these are currently all Southbridge students?
All Southbridge students.
That we're paying a substantial amount of money to the collaborative. So these two programs will house about ten kids right to start?
Yes.
And save us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year?
We figured at least, you know, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars for the tuitions, and we're, we've offered the, I've offered the program to other special ed directors at a substantial discount to them. We're hoping that they will respond, and...
Any other questions?
No, I just want to, this is going to, so this will start in the regular school year in September after the holidays.
We actually have some kids starting this summer.
This summer, they're starting already. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by school committee? I'd just like to thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. And I'd like to thank all the teachers who are still here, and thank the three principals who are here this evening, Diane Shaw, John Riley, and Brian Montini, for coming up and supporting the teachers. We appreciate it. And our curriculum director, Jeff Zangy, and Tammy Peralt, our math director, and Karen Ryan, who's not here this evening. So a lot of people working very hard in this district, and a lot of good things happened tonight. I think you saw tonight the quality of the teaching staff in this district, and the things we're capable of doing when we put our mind to it. And I think we now have a focus, we have a direction, and I think we understand that the rigor is needed, and we have teachers here who are willing to take on that challenge. So, thank you very much.
I'd like to move on to agenda item number nine, report of the superintendent.
Okay. First of all, let me tell you how much I enjoy graduation. Graduation in the senior class went very, very well. We had a beautiful day in the middle of all the rain. Just worked out very, very well, and our graduates are to be commended, the high school staff and administrative staff are to be commended for putting on a very good show. The band was wonderful. I just thought it was a great event. I followed that up with this past... Uh, I followed that up with, uh, this past, uh, Friday night, a teacher retirement dinner out at, uh, Kohasse where we have, uh, we have nine teachers who are retiring as we know right now. Only four were able to make it because the rest are out, uh, doing things, uh, for future careers and those, those kind of things. So, uh, we had four teacher retirements and we'll recognize all of those teachers at a future meeting to, so we know all their names and put them on the agenda so everybody can see that. But it was a really nice event and, and Diana was there as well and, and the union invited me to speak and, uh, Mr. Joe Van was also there to, to speak. And, and we re-appreciate all the work that those teachers have put in in this district. I think nine teachers was over two-hundred-and-forty years of service. Uh, so it's, it's really a testament to their longevity as well as their dedication to the Southbridge schools. I had the, uh, opportunity last week to, uh, to sit in Mrs. Subordi's class. Mrs. Subordi's on our math team, and, uh, I actually did the reach out and read in her class to, to first graders. And I lost my book, uh, but they wouldn't let me get away with not going, so I had to get another book. I read Duck for President. I think that's going to get my vote. I'm going to do a write-in. Uh, so I, uh, I, I enjoyed reading to those kids and they were, they were really, really, really a great group of first graders and, and asked some really good questions too. Plus, they figured out how old I was, so they know now what year I was born and all that stuff. We, we added, we added math to the, to the lesson. Uh, but, uh, you know, it just, the things that are happening in this district are good, are positive. I was up at the new middle high school today, and I know there'll be a report on that later, but, but, uh, to see the progress in that building, I would encourage people, I think this coming Saturday is, is, the next Saturday is the last formal, uh, walk-around visit. And then we'll have other visits throughout the summer and at the, and the fall. But that building is really getting close, uh, and it is absolutely a wonderful building and, and the, the construction folks are, they're, they're hitting it pretty hard right now to finish on time. And, and we have furniture moving in there on the nineteenth, so, uh, there's a lot of work being done and I have other things to report on later, but, but a lot of positive things are happening and, uh, those are all good things. I think people need to start talking about those things.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number ten, the report of the business manager, fiscal report, fiscal report of financial year twenty-twelve. Mr. Wiggins?
I'm passing down the, uh, the last projected financial report. The next one you'll get will be the year-end financial report. Um, and I would commend you to the last page where the grand total, if you will, we're projecting a fund balance of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Now, out of that, there are, uh, three soft costs, if you will, um, that if you remember, we've been having a budget freeze all year because we anticipated some soft costs that would come due with the building project that would not be MSBA-eligible. And so, I'm holding some money for those to be spent prior to June thirtieth. That would leave a projected fund balance of eighty-four, seven-oh-five, ninety-nine. And my recommendation would be that if we end up with a fund balance in that vicinity, that we take that balance and we use it to prepay tuitions.
Mr. Wiggins, there'll be a, an agenda item, an action item for the school committee at the next meeting to prepay tuition?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't like to do that until the last gasp.
I understand, yep.
We, we, we have the invoices in hand. I mean, we're ready to write the, the, the checks, if you will, but, um, until we absolutely know what that bottom line's going to be. We're fairly confident in this number because we literally went through every single employee and projected out, obviously, what we would owe them for the rest of the year, went through all of the different lines, obviously, all the purchase orders that are encumbered, anything we could unencumber. So, this is, I would say, a fairly close approximation to where the year-end will be.
Moving on to agenda item number eleven, school committee actions. A move that the Southbridge School Committee approved the changes in the central office staff-based salaries and titles as proposed by the school business manager. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Uh, the chairman asked me to request the committee to postpone it to a specific date so he could be here for this. Uh, I leave it up to the committee. If you'd like to postpone, uh, motion, a second at this time would be in, in favor. If not, we move forward on it.
Motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone by Tom O'Leary. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Discussion? You have to give it to a specific date.
That's what I'm just asking.
The next meeting is what, uh, he requested.
Yeah, I, I just, I appreciate it. Um, I think the chairman deserves the opportunity to be here and, uh, have his voice, so, uh, thank you for the second round.
Twenty-fifth, we're on a Monday. The motion's to postpone till the twenty-fifth. There's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? One, one opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to B, move that the Southbridge School Committee authorize the school business manager to purchase a new van via state contract pricing in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars. In further, that said van will be financed by a three-year lease to be paid for through food service revolving fund monies. Said lease to come back to the school committee for approval before the purchase agreement and lease agreement can be finalized and signed by the business manager. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second discussion.
I just, uh, there's a memo in your packet that kind of updated you on all three vans. I think there was concern, and rightly so, last time that I proposed a food service van, that we would potentially be purchasing it out of operating funds. In looking at how our food service balance looks right now, it appears that we're going to end up somewhere in excess of fifty-three thousand dollars, which is a substantial increase. I think that I could, um, safely, um, do a three-year lease through the food service to pay for this van exclusively and then to slightly offset a part of that cost by getting the van this summer to help us with our move, I would charge back, I would basically rent the van to the district, um, to offset part of the cost, um, so that we could use it as part of our, our move this summer.
Any questions?
Do I get to negotiate that rental over the summer with him?
Absolutely. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to unfinished business, a district reconfiguration update progress?
The, uh, letters went out, um, this week to the parents of elementary students through their assignment for next year. And we had, uh, we, we made an, an error, uh, my fault. Uh, we actually put out, when, in the letter, we put a spreadsheet that had the people who live on that street with the parent name, the address, and the student name. We, we should not have published the student name, uh, with the address, and I apologize for that. I have had a couple of calls from parents. We haven't had a lot, uh, but, but it was a mistake, uh, and I'll own up to that. And we certainly won't make the mistake again, but we, we got the letters out and I think most people now know where their students are going to school. Uh, so, uh, that, that is where we are. We have appointed all of our staff to particular spots in the buildings. Uh, over the next day or two, the last bit of our staff, our special ed Title I and ELL staff will be notified where they will be teaching next year. Most of them aren't changing a whole lot, but some will change. So, we'll be notifying them in writing over the next day or two. Uh, so, and boxes are being filled up in the buildings for the teachers who are moving. Uh, teachers who are moving from one building, uh, but staying in their own building, just moving from one classroom to another, everybody knows what room they're going to. So, uh, I think we're, we're as far along as we can be right now. Uh, and we're, we're very happy with the progress and our principals, I know, are working very hard to answer questions from staff and things. And I met with the teachers', uh, leadership group for about an hour and a half, a week and a half or so ago, just to discuss some issues that had come up, and we, I think we answered all their questions. So, so things are working well and, uh, you know, as, as things come up, I'll let you know, but, but right now, it's, uh, our biggest issue is that mistake we made when I, when I approved the letters to go out.
Next agenda item, twelve B, add-on committee update on maintenance department. We have no report at this time. Moving on to C, accelerated improvement plan.
Uh, we, uh, are still working with state, the state to get, to make sure that our benchmarks are where they want them to be. We, uh, we should get something back from them, uh, or to them this week, uh, or if not late next week, early next week. Uh, but accelerated improvement plan has been implemented, uh, and our district improvement plan has been implemented. And at the next meeting, I'll be doing a presentation to show you what we've accomplished since our long-range strategic plan went into, into place and what we're still working on. So, uh, you'll have, uh, at the next meeting, a presentation from me on where we are with our strategic plan and our, and our accelerated improvement plan.
Moving on to D, change in, changes in the central office staff-based salaries and titles.
I think we've basically postponed the discussion, but the job descriptions are in your packet, and if anybody has any questions, they can contact me.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, new business. Is there any new business? I'd just like to, Dave?
If you'd indulge me for two minutes, uh, I'll make it really brief. My mom always told me not, you know, to try and, uh, leave things worse than I found. I mean, my dad was more succinct and said, try not to screw things up. So, I'm going to do this as quickly as I can. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, about two and a half weeks ago, uh, during this election that I'm involved in, uh, I began to feel a little anxiety and I really didn't know why, but, uh, it got a little worse and it got a little worse and it got a little worse. And I finally realized that the anxiety was based upon the feeling that I had a decent shot at winning this election. And, uh, there are some candidates that have come forward that I think would be fantastic for the town of Southbridge. And the anxiety that I was feeling was the fact that I may take away a chance that they would have to bring their new and fresh ideas as well as their independence, uh, to the forefront of a school district that deserves people like this to represent it. Uh, therefore, after nine years on the school committee, I'm respectfully withdrawing my name for consideration in the upcoming election. And while I understand I remain on the ballot, I urge you all as voters, took over these incredible candidates and make your selection. Thank you.
Anything else on the new business? If nothing else on the new business, I'd just like to comment, uh, the graduation, uh, for the class of two thousand and twelve, I'd like to congratulate them. Um, the impressive part was that the graduating class continues to go up as far as numbers. Uh, it wasn't too long ago, there was sixty-some-odd graduates and we're heading up towards the hundred mark. Um, and I, it continues to get better every year, so we're heading in the right direction. I'd just like to comment on the staff, uh, the middle school, high school. Put together a cookout and a staff girl softball game at Southbridge High School. Uh, the chairman, Jack Jovan, was the umpire. I went to the game. My daughter plays for the softball, uh, team. I'd like to really congratulate the staff. Uh, they did a fantastic job. It was a great outing. Uh, it was, uh, about thirty teachers, twenty-five, thirty teachers, uh, really working with the students and stuff. And it was, uh, it was also a social moment for the kids to really get to know their teachers even better on, on more of a social thing instead of always in front of the classroom. Uh, I'd like to comment that Mr. Pitcher for Wells, terrible shortstop. I told him I would announce that tonight, but I think Mr. Gabry, who's pushing seventy years old, streaked across right field and caught the ball on the run. Outstanding left field, uh, right fielder. Did a great job. Uh, just like to comment that when, when things like that in the school system happen, uh, it makes it all worth serving and it, uh, it's, it's nice to see the kids and the teachers engaged like that. Any further, uh, business and new business? If not, um...
Scott, sorry. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that, uh, Charlton Street School had Career Day last week, and I attend, I usually attend every year, um, and they had a wonderful turnout. The students were very attentive, asked a lot of great questions, and I just wanted to let the parents know, um, that their students are wonderful over there, as in every building. But, um, I always enjoy doing Career Day and teaching them about, uh, my profession. And also, in case anyone's interested and want to join them, I believe Thursday morning at nine, between nine and nine-thirty, they'll be having their Flag Day ceremony also. So, if anyone's interested in doing that, um, that's about it.
A, the next regularly school committee meeting will be held on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve council chamber. Is there anything else on new business? If not, moving on to agenda item number fourteen, school committee reports, FY twelve curriculum subcommittee.
Uh, nothing to report. Uh, the last meeting was canceled. I apologize for that, but there will be a next, uh, curriculum subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, nineteenth, six o'clock in the Hyman Room. And it'll be, uh, basically, uh, on creation. Thank you.
Next policy. Ms. Woodruff?
Uh, yes, nothing to report and no meetings. Thank you.
Budget facilities, transportation subcommittee, no report at this time. D, collective bargaining subcommittee, no report at this time. This is the portion where the building chairman gets to speak. I just happen to wear two hats tonight. Um, I would just like to comment that the building committee meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, five o'clock. The building committee meetings, uh, are getting shorter. We're coming towards completion, so it's basically about, uh, warrants and money and, and the completion. I just would like to thank our superintendent and our business manager down the stretch here. It's been a little hectic, uh, with the reconfigurations and stuff and the things they have to do for the building committees. I'd like to thank them. Um, the next tour is this Saturday. It's on the sixteenth. It's at nine o'clock. It's the last public tour. Uh, the last public tour, we had a hundred and twenty-five some-odd people. A lot of the families came and they wanted to see whether their kids were going to go to the Southbridge schools or whether they were going to go school choice. We successfully, uh, with our project and what's happening in the building, uh, see the numbers, uh, moving the other way. But again, it's the last public tour. We can still, as, as the superintendent said, we, uh, have the credit union bank that wants to tour the Southbridge Savings Bank. We have smaller groups.
The fifth grade?
Yep, the fifth grade. We want to, uh, tour with, uh, the fifth grade. The building is very safe right now. Uh, you don't have, we're near completion. Some of the floors are totally completed. They're doing cleaning. Uh, as they work their way right out the door, and the cafeteria will be a little hectic, but, uh, I, I've got to say that the construction pace that they're, they're keeping is, is remarkable. It's a, it's a crown jewel. It's on time, it's under budget, and we're going to continue in the same manner. But again, if you didn't get your liability sign off at the superintendent's office, we'll have them on site. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen, executive session. We'll have no executive session tonight. Moving on to agenda item number sixteen, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn, second by Mr. David Gorio. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much for watching the Southbridge School Committee. Meeting's adjourned.